Is there a motion out there for the minutes?
I'll make a motion, we accept and adjourn.
Second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion about it before we vote? All those in favor? All right, agenda. Old business. We had a discussion last time, two weeks ago, about the timber harvesting, if you remember. And that's where I was upstairs talking about that to see if it was any direction for us or whatever. And to kind of bring it up to date, remember anyway, that we had control over the timber harvesting, then the state took control, and then the state, it didn't work the way they wanted it to work, and so essentially it came back to us. And so as far as our ordinance is concerned, what we are doing now is exactly what it says. There was a time in there apparently that we were not. And it was unbeknownst to any of us. And apparently unbeknownst, as you saw, to Steve Bogdan, who was here two weeks ago. You know, his part was probably a little bit, I don't know, he was probably a little annoyed, or to say the least. And so what we have come to determine is there's not much we have to do at this point in time. Basically, we are where it is. So that being said, I'm going to get in touch with him and then see if I can at least tell him that we're going to try and keep him in the loop. And that may be necessarily just us because we need to have him be in the loop completely. Okay? Questions about that? So we have two things here that I'm not privy to here. I don't know anything about the first one. What do you want to do first? This...
I do have one quick question.
Go ahead, yeah, thank you.
Just a quick one. Just comparing the chart, this is about the timber harvesting.
Yeah, we're on page 10.
Page 12 of 102 in the chart, Roy uses timber harvesting for commercial.
I see.
There's four zones which are denoted there, and then when you look in the footnote, only two zones are denoted being shoreline and resource protection. Aquifer Protection District has not been noted in the footnote. I was just wondering what the exact intent there was.
Which footnote are you referring to, page 15?
Well, it says R4, so when you look on page 15, the bottom two, look at number 4. In the parenthesis, not just in the shoreline and resource protection, I was just wondering why Aquifer Protection District and Little Osipie District aren't mentioned in the footnote or if they're just, is it assumed that they're included in that footnote?
Is that what you would guess, Ken, that it is an assumption?
If it's not there, it's not there.
I was just wondering, perhaps, you know, if that was a, Jim, Tom, do you remember when the thing was drafted?
I would have to agree with Ken. If it's not stated as being covered by R4, it's not, it's not, right?
Right.
Should we correct the land use chart?
Are you trying to bring in Aquifer Protection?
Well, it's denoted in the chart but not in the footnote. I mean, I'm just trying to, it's not consistent. You must have put it together? Or just, you know, they don't say the same thing. I'm on page 12 in the...
So footnotes, similar to notes, aren't really part of the ordinance? They're just guidelines, so when the court cases are saying the notes, when you see the ordinance, I see note underneath as like a commentary version of it, isn't really part of the ordinance, so...
So you're saying on the chart, the ordinance would cover automatically all four sections because that's where it's stating that it's taking place?
Yeah.
Regardless of what the footnote says?
That's what I was trying to think, we just simplified it, instead of writing out all four in the footnote, but I wasn't there at the time.
I suggest that Ken, that might be the other way around.
Yeah, either way.
The footnote, I would think, they both have standing, but whereas the footnote is a refinement of the multi-use of the land use chart, I would think the footnote would have legal, you know...
And this is a little difference. It's a footnote to the chart, so that may have more versus when you have an ordinance, and then we've got a couple of spots in it that has a note underneath, it kind of just gives you a little guidance of what they're talking about.
Or reference.
This page on 73 has a note. When it says note, it says for the purpose of blah, 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 it's kind of just giving you a guidance, so that's not a section I can quote as somebody in violation of. Page 73 had an area that was a note, and that just happened to be a timber harvest section too. There's not very many spots where we're able to...
But it's also not going in that direction. I mean, it's pointed out exactly where it is in the chart.
Yeah.
And so the other one just doesn't appear to be strong enough to match the chart.
Yep.
But you think that the second one is the one that has more meaning?
Well, I think to clear it up, you could go into the text for the timber harvesting ordinance and dig out where it stipulates that a forest has to be retained for management of the cut in the shoreline and RP. And you'll see that that doesn't state or have anything bearing with the overlay district of active protection or the Little Osipie district. So the text would further buttress footnote. And I think probably as a correction, maybe R4 could be amended on the two, on those two, last two entries on the land use chart, would be my quick take on that. Just for clarity's sake.
I'd like to see it one way or the other, just so it'd be easier to...
Consistent throughout.
Yeah, just consistent. I'm not, though I do think Little Osipie might be just completely overlapped by shoreline and resource protection. I'm not sure.
But by the way, it's shoreline, yeah.
Yeah, but the Aquifer Protection is probably bigger than the other districts.
Exactly, it's all over town and it's not, the shoreline...
Yeah, so it's not bad for them to have a forest or to do those areas. It's not asking too much of them. It's just, then, you know, because that would increase the works he bargained was looking at by far.
Don't you have to address the way of the house because it's not a house?
Only in the shoreline zone.
So what would it take to get this corrected? Whichever way, you know, is the better way, what would it take? Does it take a full change?
If we're talking, it would be town meeting vote, and it would just be a strikeout and underline. So in the chart, if the board's thought was to focus on Aquifer Protection, to remove it, just strike out and change it to P.
Do you have access to anything that would give us more information as to which way that goes?
Do you mean by which way?
You know, whether we decided that we were going to eliminate the R4 on the chart, or whether we were going to include the other two districts in the note?
No, my sense is, as I stated, that I think the note is clearer than the land use chart. Correction, as Kenny indicated, to cross out the R4 applicability to Little Osipie and R4 protection, to let it be omitted and changed to a P.
And you're comfortable with that, Kevin?
Well, I think, I don't know what we need to, I think we could think about it and come back to it next meeting and see what people think, just break it out.
Didn't we have a couple of meetings back that we went on that gravel pit? Didn't the Osipie situation you discussed there, because one over that the other, and we found that our ordinances were stringent, more stringent than theirs, so we're better off just leaving it alone? They're talking when Captain come in? We found that we were better off holding it our own, except to use the air notices.
Right.
I think the timber harvesting ordinance, I don't know if Ken, if you've had any chance to weigh through that a little bit, but there's some hair on that ordinance that I think Stephen has, could maybe point to some places where we could get better clarity out of language here. And I threw some parts of it today, and I had to wind up.
It's extremely confusing when you're talking about the state guidelines after 274 tabs about the state.
Yeah.
And that's state language we had to put in for when that was triggered and stuff, and it's so confusing.
There's too much.
We really need to strike it out and move on.
Yeah.
But I'll touch base with the DEP, I figured that'd be a November issue, once we get it cut out.
Let's keep Stephen at our elbow on that. I would strongly suggest we need his guidance and support until we do retain the timber harvesting.
So then let's just, as far as this part's concerned, let's at least hold for the time being until we come together with everything, perhaps in November. This is not going to change anything drastically between now and June anyway, so we just have to remember to come back to this.
So that's Aquifer Protection right there. I mean, this is great east to Acton Ridge Road there. I mean, this is all Aquifer Protection. All down through here, Running Square, and through Turks Pit. So there's quite a bit of Aquifer Protection areas in town.
Yeah, that would fire, see, that would put Stephen through the loop.
Yeah, yeah, two acres almost did it. So we're thinking at this time, and we'll firm it up next month or so, that the last R4 and Aquifer Protection possibly striking out. I would leave the Little Osipie in and then fix the footnote for the Little Osipie, because it's really similar to shoreline zoning, except for it goes 500 feet versus the 250.
Yeah, it's too extensive.
So we're taking, at this point, we're tentative as to what we're going to do, and we'll just hold off until we tackle the timber harvest section in a couple of minutes. Everybody else all right with that? All right, Ken, Mr. Odom, with the ordinance section that you
Actually, Little Osipie looks like it goes up over 1,000 feet, I think it was 750, but we'll take a look at that anyways.
Page five.
So what's our background here for this?
So this is an expansion of legally existing structure within the shoreline zone of resource protection. Usually this is around the lake, so anything created, the law would only affect in 1989, anything created before that can be expanded legally 30%, 30% additions. The problem I'm facing now is in 2011, we expanded resource protection in a lot of areas out of town outside of the shoreline zone. And it's kind of a fuzzy area as far as can these areas be expanded 30%? So I'm looking on guidance for the board to see if that's something we're thinking or something you clearly don't want to consider.
What was the citation of that thing that we were kicking around between these?
4.2.2%. Saying that, but you asked me to, so I had to. So what that did was you had a vacant lot, we'll talk planning board, Richard, you had a vacant lot outside of the shoreline zone, and you could build on it. This, what we're looking at now, and let me just pick on somebody. Go down off of Flat Ground Road, this is all resource protection in this area here. So all resource protection, Healy Way coming out from my Flat Ground Road or so. New house built right there, 2008 or '09 or so, he's got a house in there, and we've got a bunch on Saunders Lanes, it's a subdivision we did up there. So when the resource protection overlay comes on top of it, the whole buffer zone, the house is all in the buffer zone. Built before zoning came, now it's in resource protection. It was in general purpose probably at the time, now it's in resource protection. So the ordinance says on B that the structure had to been there since 1989. So the ordinance is set for shoreline zoning in the shoreline zone. Looking to see if the board would consider an existing structure built before 2011 or whenever the shoreline zoning, them being allowed to expand 30%? Or you're in the resource protection, you've got a legal existing non-conforming structure, and no, you can't do any expansions.
Which is what it is right now?
Technically.
If I'm not mistaken, this would kind of go contrary to what town being just decided on.
Well, they had decided that you've got a vacant lot in the resource protection, you're not getting anything. So this is somebody that has a house, and I mean, we've got several we can take a look at, but...
That was supposed to be an undeveloped lot, was that right, Ken?
That's how the states...
Both in the planning board version, in the planning board version, we think it's also be a shed or expansion.
Right. Outside of shoreline zone.
But not the state. So this is kind of like half of the planning board version being the expansion.
Well, this is exactly, you've got an existing place, zoning came in on top of you.
So Saunders Way... Would it be like the best possible position we're asking to possibly move back to or not?
The ordinance reads that you can't get any closer to the resource, but I mean, you can make it a conditional use if you want to do a 30% in the resource protection, it's conditional use. But this is a subdivision we did, I think those six or so, Saunders Way, up at Fox's Ridge, which... There's one, two, three, four, five houses maybe on that subdivision. That's all in resource protection now.
Where abouts are those?
Oh, yeah.
Up on the Lebanon line, on the left-hand side.
Is that due to your foundation, they sold up the piece there?
A little before, so right around 1187. So I mean, the board can think about it, we can talk about it next week, but I didn't want to start working on an ordinance if everyone's thinking, no, it's resource protection, we don't want your house in there, everyone would never mind making a pickup.
The home's already standing, right?
Or maybe there's a cap on it, you're allowed 30%, but the maximum's 1,500. Because if we look at... So 30% of the shoreline zone, most of them are little camps, 30% of not much is not much. So even with that, and a lot of these are, you know, they're homes.
These are 200, is this the same area that you're talking about?
No.
So show me an example, if you can, of a house that's in resource protection, but that if we were to change it to a conditional use, you could move it back. Is there such an animal out there?
Move the...
Home back to allow the increase?
I would think the increase would just be like a bathroom addition on the right-hand side or something like that, so it'd be just an addition that would be out, it wouldn't be relocating the home.
Unless it could be a shed, right?
It would have to be attached to the house.
Okay.
So we wouldn't allow the freestanding.
Say in the case of a, say that was a house fire, and they wanted to rebuild, they could do their 30%, but we could have something written in that said that they would, you know, if the structure was damaged, that, you know, they would relocate further back if it was...
Yeah, so that's already in the ordinance. If they're in resource protection, the place burns down, it's coming for best possible location for you guys for relocation. So, and again, they're not small homes, they're not tiny little 24x24 camps, which in one aspect, the 30% really isn't fair, because 30% of 24 by 24, or somebody that has 100 by 100, 30% is much greater. And the state trying to clean it up a little bit, but it's not very helpful either. So with this particular one... New home constructed 2008 in the buffer zone, the resource, probably the Salmon Falls River, it's all in flood zone, coming off the river and the stream. So with this one here... You wouldn't be able to build onto the back, you could only build onto a side that wouldn't be encroaching on the resource. And I'm only bringing this one up because it's sold, and I thought as soon as the buyer found out it was in resource protection, there was going to be an issue. But when we use the word conservation land somewhat, he loved the idea, that nobody can build, nobody this and that, but then he's thinking, well, could I do a garage in the future? Can I do this? Am I allowed to spend 30% like everybody else in the resource and shoreline zone that was there before 1989? So the only difference is we've changed our shoreline zone and made it more stringent versus the state's version in 1989.
It's also 2008?
This particular one probably, that'd be my guess. Oh, '08, '09, something like that. It came in before we did the zoning change in 10? 11?
How many lots are we talking, do you think, approximately? 50?
Yeah, 50, 70, in that range.
What effect will that have on the overall?
You're not supposed to be getting any closer to the resource. All these houses were here prior to zoning changes, so they were in rural, now they're in critical rural, oh, now they're in resource protection. So before zoning came, they could have done the garage addition, they could have done this, they could have done that. Now it's in resource protection, so they can't include any of them. Now expansion works around, truly it's how the ordinance is read, so...
But if you give it to one section, it's going to be labeled for one person.
It would be for everybody.
That's right, it goes across the board.
Yeah.
So it goes across the board. What damage will that do to the resource protection area?
I would think 30% expansion, you're not getting any closer to the resource, and you're doing stormwater mitigation, whether it's drip line trenches, plunge pools, rain gardens, infiltration beds, I mean, something's being mitigated, so no additional stormwater is coming off the property. The other thing, feel somewhat sorry for, if it's in resource protection... None of this area can count towards lot size, so he has, I think there's maybe 200 square feet on the lot that counts for lot size. So if this was a greater lot, I mean, he's only got a little bit of area that's out of resource protection here and a little bit up here. This particular individual, when he sold his house, he created some land over here for the buyer, so if he ever wanted to do a garage, he could be out of the resource protection with this particular one. They, he, the seller still had a little bit of land, so he could work with the new buyer and give him something over here just in case. But that would be a detached garage, if that's what he was thinking, doing, 140, 150 feet away from where his house is. So it's clear that no, he couldn't do a garage over here unless it was attached to his house, and if the board was thinking, that would be part of his 30% expansion, which is calculated square foot and cubic feet as far as currently in the shoreline zone. But my biggest issue is, in the shoreline zone, it says that the house was there before 1989. Oddly enough, no resource protection has been expanded in the state except for Osipie.
But that's not necessarily bad then?
No, I don't think so. If it's in area to protect, it needs to be...
But if we look at this house, for example, there probably is no mitigation of runoff if the house was built back in, you know...
Before we had the stormwater ordinance and stuff.
So if we change and allow, example, the person to come in and put a garage on it?
If he had the 30%.
Yeah, if we, and so now, when we, if we were to do a conditional use for, we could do it for the whole thing.
A building permit, if I could write him a building permit for a garage, stormwater would be automatic, he would need to comply with the stormwater regulations, so...
But the entire construction, the entire building, house, garage also, not just the garage?
Correct. Yeah, he would need that to mitigate the stormwater.
So in a sense, we could be making it better for...
Every time we touch it.
Yeah.
This is my information, the stormwater really impacted this as far as, you know, dispersing the stormwater. Many years ago, I believe, we had a thing about the Salmon Falls water shop, and so representing my company, and we were kind of concerned too about the massive amount of water being directed, given away from or toward the Salmon Falls River. And we found that a lot of places that we were trying to turn the water away from the river was detrimental, because the river flow would slow down and therefore weeds and stuff could grow, because we're looking at using the water to run a mill, so we don't want any weeds in there. So we was indicted in the University of New Hampshire at the time, but there's some places where you're going to be. But there's some places where you're going to be, watch out what you're doing because you can turn water away from the river, you could do more harm than it does by letting it go there. Because the volume of water is necessary to keep it at a certain level and a certain speed of the current. That's true to keep the weeds from growing.
But that's the assumption, is, is the water still being used today for the mills?
One of them is, not all of them, because two of them are closed down.
The, the more important part of the stormwater is the...
They were worried about its weeds growing in, in the river, which would be detrimental to everybody, not only the water supply. Slowed down the water, because we had that right where I used to live in San Jose. Well, elephant years ago, and that before it was nice and clear, if the water slowed down.
So you're asking us to...
Think about it at the next meeting.
Get some guidance as to whether you want to go through and change this or...
Or if the board says, "No, you've got all you've got."
So should we look at that between now and, I guess, first of September? Because I think that's the night of the next meeting. Tom, good? You'll be with me too?
Yeah. I would suggest when we're doing our homework on that, that we look over existing language, existing language, starting with one four eight, page four, three. Because there's a lot of intent here. The sense of it is essentially that non-refluency usage shall not be expanded, which has been kind of our, one of our...
Yes.
Golden rules.
Yeah. And the exception for that is, in the shoreline resource protection, the thirty percent rule. So four eleven, uh, one four eleven two talks about that allowance.
All right, any other comments, questions on it? Pretty good with that, then? Best practical location.
There we go, ain't it?
Start everybody.
That's the existing camp.
How did you say, Texas? Where is this this camp?
Avenue six. And the reason this one always specked out to me was the door, no window in it.
And we see up on fifteenth?
Correct.
I see it. I would be in the end?
Yeah, yeah.
Why you would put it, is that the water?
Uh, no, it is the roadside, I can do that. Just as unique.
The floor is above?
Currently, it's twenty-three feet from the water, thirty-seven feet from the road. The proposed would be twenty-nine from the water and no closer to the road, which would be thirty-seven.
What do you think is this one?
Myself.
So we're at the game for us with the sixteen?
No.
Twenty-three to thirty-nine?
Twenty-nine.
Oh, twenty-nine.
So really, they're shrinking the house a little bit and then stretching it likewise.
I own that place, I guess I want to take one.
Oh, yeah.
It's a, what, is it small?
So is this cathedral or is it a loft or what's the deal here?
In the...
So is that a, is this a loft area or is it...
Correct, yeah. Yeah, it's living space on the second floor.
Okay, will it be a second, I mean, a two-story building? Is it a new one? I think so. I think so. So it's cut it back this way. Don't you think? Well... So this is only a thirty percent expansion?
For the basement, you get underneath. The porch is currently enclosed, the new one wouldn't be, which is on the side. Both. Cubic and square.
So if I block out the basement, what I see here is a thirty percent increase on what I would see on this one.
So I haven't gone through, this just came in today. I haven't gone through all the thirty percent numbers, but really, the board would just be saying, number-wise, how far from the water you guys feel comfortable with. It's tough because there's not much to the road. It's already too close to the road. It's a unique lot.
All those little lots in there.
Right.
There's pictures over there of the existing.
So it's unique because you've got the road right behind it, which really isn't unique, but you've got... There is a lot of land back there, but the board's never moved anybody back across the street and behind this other house, that would be the only spot.
And, and that's the house that someone else owns?
This one here, seventeen years.
Topped right out of the middle of their property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there is land back behind the hundred-foot zone, but it, it's not flat or anything, that's for sure.
And they don't get older than there?
Two fifteen.
The wonders never cease.
Yeah, so there's the contour lines. Twenty-foot contours there. But it's kind of steep back there. That's the street side. Yeah.
Have you put in a new septic?
Septic is only a couple of years old.
Where is it? Work behind the camera now?
Septic, we did, I don't know, I'd say a couple, ten, five. It's two thousand. When I wrote the permit, did the inspection in two thousand as well. It's behind the house, up by the road.
And the water would be where?
Usually, they would remove the house, build the road down to the lake, put the well in, and then work their way out, build the house and...
So we had to build it, they had to build the well?
Yeah.
So, so if we go back, if we were to go back six feet, the septic is still something between the house and the road?
Yeah.
Still enough water?
On the back side.
Well, what's anybody think?
So, yeah, just, just, the, the thirty percent expansion rule covers body metric and floor space. So if somebody could take a multiple-story, small footprint house and spread it out into a single foundation with a much larger rain drainage area, that would be permissible, is what this looks like.
I didn't really listen to your question because I thought that you were talking that Mr. Maston owns a house that was built in two thousand and then resource protection came on top of it. He enjoys resource protection, he loves the neighbors, but I hadn't really thought this, this affected you. I could have picked on you tonight and brought you...
Yeah, you could have brought my house. I thought, I thought it was on the bench.
He likes the resource protection, he likes the neighbors.
I don't mind having a thousand buck hit to my house value.
Uh, what was your question again?
The, the, I understand the basic reasoning, you know, you don't want somebody to take a large footprint house and build some tall office or take some... But it appears that the environmental impact of the house has more to do with the square footage of its roof than anything else. That's what they're...
Ground cover.
So this one looks like the house they're proposing to build has a much larger roof area than the existing house does.
Now, if you're taking all those different roofs.
Yeah, it would at least be, it's probably going to have more ground cover.
Yeah.
And then with the stormwater mitigation, they would be looking at drip line trenches around the perimeter of it, rain gardens, infiltration beds, or detention, subgrade detention.
So with those modifications, it would likely have less impact than...
Correct, yeah. Uh, some people haven't been doing the drip line trenches and couldn't been, put gutters into dry wells. I guess we'll see how those work over time because when the gutters fail, you rip the gutters off and we haven't got anything. But again, the drip line trenches can be filled with duff and leaf and stuff like that. Nobody's maintaining that either, but the key to all of it is maintenance-free. It's got to be maintenance-free and nobody's going to do anything with it, so...
There's no building on lot nineteen?
There is a little tiny shed down by the water.
Inhabitable? Do you think so?
Some camp suite camp for somebody to keep for the toilet. Somebody comes from Newport Beach, California to enjoy Melson Lake in there. Then there's probably another property in the same name nearby. This one here.
There you go.
Yeah, that one there.
So that's their access to the water?
Yeah.
So they're not, so number thirty there isn't going to be necessarily faced with a house right next to number one nineteen? Like, we, there's no way we could, look at the possibility of putting right across the road there? We'd still be able to use a septic, it would be...
It's trying to sliding it more this way?
Or over here.
Oh, putting it across the street?
Well, I'm just thinking, they probably still have a pretty good view of the water from there. Um, there isn't going to be a house built right next to it, presumably. It could be...
They don't want to do that. They don't want to do that.
No.
Nobody wants to roll between the, the water and the road.
I, we, we want to move them a hundred feet back if we can as we look at all the options and...
This is the septic system running.
Unless we put them behind the other house, which no one wants to do this.
Existence of septic is there.
If you put that piping on the road, you got a problem with heavy trucks.
So this Quinn family...
Well, they put septic right in there all the time. Witchfield, everything.
This Manson family, because there's a space in there. They could totally do that.
It's not that far away.
Everyone in the lot and the shoreline community's afraid.
Correct. Yeah, that's right. Okay, so they don't have to be in the outer piece.
Just currently, they're, they're out close to lot nineteen in that corner there.
Right there?
Yeah.
Plot plan had it as fifteen feet.
So if they were fifteen feet from lot nineteen across the street, where would that...
So I'm glad that, I had about thirty-three feet right in that area there.
So there's it up from the lot to the corner of the property?
So if they stayed fifteen feet off of lot nineteen, although they didn't get up to ten feet, can't they?
Correct.
So if they were ten feet off of lot nineteen...
Ten feet off of seventeen, that would leave them fourteen feet for a house in that area there and that's...
Yeah, that's just, it's just too small.
It is.
Okay.
And, I mean, that's the first area we looked at and then the, I mean, the area out behind. And of course, it all looks flat on paper, but that incline comes up about twenty feet to get into that general area there. And, I mean, we're teetering three hundred feet back there. The ordinance prohibits odd-shaped lots. I was going to say, if I see a square lot, it's going to be odd because there isn't any other in town, but they're all...
Now you can call it my house.
Now I...
It's a square lot. Not on the block.
So do you think this is unusual enough to take a look at it?
You're more than welcome to, but to me, there are, there's, between the road and the lake, and that, and that's the problem with all of the lots we deal with.
So this is a departmental issue?
Yeah.
Would it be a problem if they do what they're requesting?
I don't know. Ninety-one feet. Waterfucked to the edge of the road, roughly.
And the new, um, septic was thousand gallon?
Three-bedroom thousand gallon tank.
Isn't that small for twenty-one-hundred-foot house?
It goes by bedroom counts, so it's a three-bedroom system.
And that's what's expected to be in the new...
Correct. Unless they make an adjustment to it, put a new septic in. And they were talking about a new field two over onto the side. They just hadn't figured they've got one that's fairly new and they're looking at cost of that. So it's supposed to be fifty feet from the center of the road, so they were only at thirty-seven, I think. Thirty, forty.
Forty feet?
So it's ten feet shy already of the required setback, so I didn't really see a good reason to push, push, push more. The new house is twenty-eight feet on the way. So if they went skinnier, twenty-eight's the easier size to build to get your stairs in and stuff. If you shrunk it down to twenty-four, you're just going to allow them to stretch it out further. No, again, now you're...
Two by six of holes in your twenty-four, one at twenty, twenty-three feet.
It shrinks quick.
Did those drawings go back to you, Ken?
No. Still thinking about them.
You pick at that one more time, please.
Uh, existing or a site plan?
How's the retaining?
Two feet thick. Somebody owned some concrete when they made it by, I think, about five feet. It's in fairly good shape.
Two feet thick, wasn't it a hole back?
Uh, see, bro. Uh, Seabrook.
Is there anything in particular to that being on site that you want to stipulate as something that is remediated within this perimeter?
Uh, they're going to vegetate the other areas, they'll, they'll do their stormwater mitigation. It's a typical, um, not a lot of vegetation, but a lot of, you know, the big pines are still left on the site.
Is the wall sound, do you think?
Uh, the front retaining wall? It's in rather good shape. I think it's back in the day when you mixed your concrete on-site by hand.
Yeah. You made it two foot thick.
You made it two foot thick. You didn't mess around.
As long as there was some good stipulation because of that, uh, I mean, it's a pretty narrow apron between their front, which would be, there is, as, as Lincoln was pointing out, there is a ample or a probably an increased roof area pitching to the lake, do you guess, Ken?
If there is, that would be mitigated by, um, drip line trenching.
Right, I'm, I'm just saying that the, with the narrow apron of, of land between their front of the building, on the lakeside and the retaining wall, you want to be more attentive and neutral to, um, uh, re-vegetating and our improvement, whatever the hell they can do out front there, right now it looks like you're kind of ragging a little bit of lawn.
Yeah, yeah, and that, that's basically what it is. So, I, I suppose if you're at sixty feet versus thirty, if you've got lawn, it's still going to saturate and shed. You got to get the water into the ground.
Yeah.
Which a, a better vegetative buff is going to absorb it better than a lawn.
I, I do accept that this is pretty strange, um, uh, stormwater management measures in place. This is getting proposed to.
I mean, ideally, you know, the state wouldn't allow, but to put a lip on the retaining wall to stop anything that came down to it somehow. Even a rubber razor on the backside or something like that. When we get the, um, stormwater plan, that's something we'd be looking at. Although there's no real erosion from the property either, it's fairly, um, absorbed in.
Yeah. That'd be a good thing to add to a construction.
Oh, definitely. Everyone's using the stump grindings, erosion control mulch now, so, um, that doesn't let it, anything through.
How much space, you know, the grass going down to that wall, how much above the grass is that wall?
It looks like it's the same hole on there.
It was fairly level.
You just walk right out of the hole.
Yeah, because this, this fence is probably this fence. Same, same structure, excuse me, structure.
Yeah, so it looks sort of about the same.
You could enhance that maybe, I don't know, not being a stormwater manager, you might be able to enhance that by a little excavation and a gravel-filled trenching.
Right, and right at the backside of the wall, the little stone, it almost looks like that's where the water hits and then drops down, because you wouldn't want to undermine the backside of the wall, but, um, really you want to mitigate the stormwater before it even leaves the house area. Mitigate it, and everybody wants to fix it at the water's edge, but really you've got to go up to the driveway to the road, and then to the tall spots on the road, if you're the low guy on the road, you've got to start on the hills and, and get rid of it before it comes on to drop. And I think when we review best practical location, or even a lot of permits that we issue with the stormwater, um, between the Acton Shapley Youth and the Acton Lakefield Youth Conservation Guys, they do quite a bit of, um, educational outreach calls.
All right, Thompson, you have a motion?
I, I move to accept Kenny's recommendation with, uh, for the setback of Manser rebuild, with, uh, good, um, stormwater management.
Stringent, stringent, stringent.
Stringent stormwater management, uh, measures in place.
Twenty-nine feet from the high water and thirty-seven from the center of the road.
Is there a second?
No, I'm saying...
Any other comments on the motion itself? I think, I'm looking at the minutes, okay, look, we didn't vote on anything two weeks ago, I believe, right?
No.
Was it when you were... I don't think so, so I think what we'll do is we'll still allow you to vote. We didn't even say anything last time, I know it's in the minutes, but I know we didn't do it. And then in two weeks, we'll switch back to link, okay? All right, so all those are favor? All those opposed? Pass this for one. All right, anything else?
Want to go through many of the conditions quickly or... I'm sure Ken's got a pretty wall in his hands, but...
Stormwater management plan from any of the qualified individuals we use.
Like you think of the, um, like your county composition.
They're extremely hard to get a hold of. We've had really, really good...
This is the Mount Zachary County law.
Yeah, uh, Acton Shapley Betty Smith has done a tremendous job. She is environmental... Specialist, she's not an engineer, she's out of the Raymond, um, Savago area. She's been a great ax, asset for that side of the lake. And she's really, really good at, um, coming up with solutions.
Does she have a company name?
Acton Shapley Youth Conservation, so she works right across the water. Does she, I don't think she works in the winter, I think they shut down. Acton Lakefield stays going all year.
Somebody can just point their attention toward that retaining wall, obviously, and...
Yeah.
Look at the driveway, like you were saying, the driveway access and...
It's started at the top of the road and worked every down, yeah, you've got to...
Make sure you even look across the road, since they own across the road as well.
Which that mitigates, i- if you do that, that reduces the stormwater leaving your property without doing anything else. So I mean, if you mitigate the stormwater coming onto your property, you do the addition, you have less. But still, most people, um, after they do this, and I'm assuming it's about a four hundred thousand dollar project, and it's worth four hundred thousand dollars, the lot, so they've got eight hundred thousand, almost a million dollars of investment into that lake stayed clean. Good water quality, no invasive species, so once they realize how sensitive it is and how fast it can turn, and they can lose their life savings or their retirement gets cut in half, they, they become very, very, um, concerned about water quality and what their neighbors are doing, usually, so...
Are these new waters you're seeing, or...
Uh, no, they've had it for a while.
Okay, so they're familiar with Melson, yeah.
Yeah.
That house that's behind them, how does that impact on the runoff coming into this property?
We all live downstream.
Yeah, but I mean, is there, is it an older house, no mitigation of, uh, you know, runoff?
Very seldom, uh, it's almost all trees and vegetated and shrubbery. Uh, they just put a brand new septic in last year and stump grinded most of that whole hill, so a lot of thing coming off is being absorbed in, but they haven't done anything to trigger a stormwater management plan around the house.
And do you actually get a paper plan for these problems now?
For stormwater management?
Yeah.
If it's a simple one, then it's just drawn as easy as, you know, some braves bringing it down to a mitigation area, uh, detention pond, rain garden or something like that. If it's more complicated, then the surveyor draws it up with the certified plot plans. Acton or Shapley, either one of the, or Lakefield or Shapley, either one of those guys draw it out, and they're just kind of similar to this, dropping in some stuff. Uh, first thing they go for is the infiltration steps, the cribbing filled with crushed stone, the drip line trenches. Um, the youth conservation kids, they haven't got into the infiltration beds where you're putting chambers underground and bringing it in and getting it into the ground, they haven't gotten into much of that, but any of the surveying and engineers would get into that. Uh, one of the projects we have on Great East right now, they're mitigating the stormwater for that, and that's all engineered design.
What tree is that? Just a difficulty, huh?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
All right, anything else?
One question, people. Have they drilled pipes in that two-foot wall?
Uh, down, down on the bottom, I would think, to relieve the pressure on the backside.
The thing is, if you're going to do that trench line, it's always stones, most places will help.
Oh, definitely. Relieve the pressure on the backside.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, you got it, right here. You got it, you will say it when you're ready.
All right, all those are favor? All right, the end is adjourned, thanks for...